Progressive urban core downtown entertainment district charges in around the country. That's money that I would love to go back to downtown, but it can go back to the general fund to help the parish. So right there is a solution. Start charging the meters, start charging the public parking lots, which I can name three, one across from Antlers, one next to Marley's and Rosa Parks. Not only we're going to manage them right, because we're going to have personnel manage them and I, and we're going to eliminate the huge stress that is putting on Chief Aguilar, because instead of him actually policing the streets and keeping the streets vibrant, he has to go to these parking lots and take care of these problems. Another suggestion, dining platforms. What is that? Basically, there are specific businesses on Jefferson Street that would love the ability to serve food on the streets, just like many, many, many towns in this country do. We call outside dining. Allow us to pay an annual fee back to the city, back to the parish, to have the opportunity to have a vibrant Jefferson Street. I can go all night, I can give 100 suggestions. Long-term federal courthouse. Let's stop paying $30,000 in property taxes a year to keep that ugly structure with broken windows. Let's public-private partnership, and let's get them to pay 130,000 dollars in property taxes than rather than waste 30,000 dollars a year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thanks. Really appreciate the opportunity to come address the council. My name's Pat Trahan. I'm not representing any of my boards or my favorite charities tonight, as y'all see me up here. I'm Citizen Pat, and I'm going to focus my comments on the big picture. Like, you know, how did we get here? Take the long view. And, you know, when a hole is this deep, I think, you know, the question shouldn't be, well, what do we need to do now, or what do we need to do next? I think the better question is, what have we done that's gotten us in this situation that we need to stop doing? I think those are the better questions to be asking now. And I'll start with my punchline. Let's stop four-laning every road out of town and allowing just undifferentiated development wherever it will happen. And even if we're using somebody else's money to four-lane those roads, I think I'll show how it still comes back to hurt the parish. So the parish is paying a high price for all this free money, these free roads, these roads that have been dedicated, that we take the financial responsibility for maintaining over the years. We've taken on huge liabilities to replace and repair and maintain all of this infrastructure. So a couple of generations ago, prior to World War II, cities grew incrementally and organically. City would build a street or two at a time. Private investors would come in, fill up the streets with buildings, they'd pay property taxes, the city would pay more than enough, the city would collect more than enough to pay for the infrastructure, and the city builds wealth. And that's how it's been done for thousands of years in cultures everywhere all over the world. Since World War II, we've decided to do it a different way here. So productive growth paid the city for its infrastructure costs. Now, and back then, we would use that wealth to build what? Fine public school buildings, like NP Moss or Lafayette Elementary, that we can be proud of. Fine courthouses, public parks. That's where community wealth went. Today, the great majority of our community wealth goes to roads, concrete, pipe, asphalt, and nearly all of it way out on the edge of the city and the parish. It's not coming into the core of the parish. And, you know, this sprawling development pattern produces a bunch of big-box stores, strip shopping centers, cul-de-sacs subdivisions, a very thin kind of linear development that doesn't raise near enough tax revenues to pay to maintain itself, to even maintain the roads and bridges. We're not collecting enough taxes. And Bruce, I agree, our property taxes are probably inadequate, but we're allowing inadequate development that produces inadequate revenues on our land, that that's a big part of the problem. You know, I wish that we could think like farmers. I mean, the greatest asset that the parish has is land. That has never changed. And yet, we allow our asset, our land, to be developed in very unproductive ways that don't produce the kind of revenues it takes to maintain the property. And, you know, the big-box stores, that's the poster child, perfect example. What do they do? They come in here, they browbeat cities, they say, you got to give us tax incentives or we're not coming. Mr. Knock Hands is correct, they're coming, they're coming anyway. And then, they go to Conrad Como three years later and say, oh, well, you know, we sell these stores, they're really not worth much, so you need to give us a break on our taxes. They do that, right? Then, they strip mine revenues out of our communities for about an average of 12, 15 years. Walmart lasts about 12 years. Then they go out to the next exit, they leave clauses in their leases that says, nobody else can go in there and sell the same merchandise. So they leave it dark and blighted for three years. And then, you know, after it's been blighted for a while and a real burden to the community, they give it away to a megachurch, and it comes off the tax rolls forever and ever. Amen. Hallelujah, I guess. But just think about that land use and that development pattern, and what we're allowing those guys to do to us.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
I want to get on the parish side.
That's pretty good.
Although I live in the city of Lafayette, I do pay parish property taxes, and I do pay city taxes. So, and I don't know if everybody here has heard me before, but the solution is in the state constitution. There's a clause in there, and I'll read it to you. I don't know if everybody has heard it before, but in the state constitution, it says, "Special Districts, Local and Public Agencies, Section 16A, Consolidation. Assumption of debt, if the special district or local public agency which has consolidated merged has outstanding indebtedness, the authority provided by this section, which is Section 16 Consolidation, states very clearly, shall not be exercised unless provision is made for the assumption of indebtedness by the governing authority of the subdivision, Lafayette Consolidated Government, of the local governing subdivision involved, the city and the parish." You have an opportunity on this tax renewal to call what it says, Lafayette City Parish Property Tax. First, now you've joined every one, not two separate entities, but one, as a tax. Now you have the opportunity to merge, as the constitution says, both of those taxing authorities and governmental agencies, which now provides taxation with equal representation on the city-parish council. The ultimate goal, what is the ultimate goal? That's the ultimate goal. Lafayette Parish One. We become one unit, one government, one set of taxes, one set of representatives that equal all of us, as one man said. We're two separates. We have two separate books. You put them in one document. If you would put the city tax budget in one document, and the parish tax budget in the other document, and you put them together separately and just put city parish over it, that's what you have now. And they're mixed in the budget document. It's hard to figure out. I've done it before, but it's hard for just a layperson to do it. So now's the opportunity for us to go as Lafayette City Parish Property Taxes. A city parish property tax for fire protection. I think that's a great idea. A city parish property tax for parks and recreation. That's a great idea. We have the opportunity, you gentlemen now, have the opportunity. This opportunity has been on the board since consolidation. You wonder how we got here? I don't know if anybody has ever read the 1992 technical report. The technical report, in 11 pages, says consolidation won't solve the parish budget problem. Two ways to do it, though. You can do it for me, simply by putting an ordinance before you that deannexes my property from the city of Lafayette, so now I can get into the parish and become one with the parish. And you know, I know it's possible, because the city of Youngsville did it in 1992. I know, I think it's 92. They deannexed a section of land that was completely surrounded from their corporate limits into the parish. This gentleman wanted to be parish one. He started it. We have an opportunity. You can either do it by deannexing properties, or you can do it by start labeling all our taxes, city parish property taxes, city parish sales tax, make them one. You have a city alimony tax, I know that, because I pay that, and you have a parish alimony tax, I know that, because I pay that too. It'd be nice if they were called city parish alimony taxes, where everybody pays into the unit of the parish of Lafayette, to make our parish one of the best in the state. You have the opportunity, gentlemen. I appreciate you the time, and I look forward to working with you on anything of this nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
First of all, I want to thank you all for the work that you all are doing, and the opportunity not only to provide input, but I've been to your meetings, and it is a conundrum that you all are faced with, and it's an amazing amount of work and analysis, and I appreciate the transparency with which you've engaged this effort. Most everybody's already touched on the things that I wanted to say, but there are one or two that I wanted to echo. One is that we have, with this inequity of sales tax and property tax, and the inequity between parish and city in terms of representation, clearly the issues of the charter are substantial, and they are not just simply the fiscal ones, but they are the representational ones. So as you go about this work, even though you're trying to solve a fiscal problem, there is the larger structural problem about the way consolidation was set up, and its inadequacies. And whatever solutions are proposed, or whatever solutions are vetted, it has to be done on the basis of a lens of equity in terms of how everybody in the community is treated. And I think that there are enormous inequities for people who live in the unincorporated areas of the parish, who are not getting their fair share or their fair shake, as there are issues of inequity and representation for citizens as well. The problem of property tax is made also inequitable in that with the homestead exemption, which I know is a constitutional thing that would take way more gray matter than I have to try and solve, it does produce a disproportionate burden of property tax on commercial property, which is where we also get the vast majority of sales tax. So there are these balances that are out of whack in terms of what is the commercial burden versus what is the residential burden. And then within the residential burden, the fact that homestead doesn't apply to people who rent property, you know, that's an inequity in the way our tax structure is done. So as Pat Trahan was saying, there are some very large macro issues here about what is the fairness basis by which we solve this tax problem, which is an immediate problem. The second issue is on the question of development pattern, because clearly, property tax depends on good property values, and property values are determined by the development policies that we put in place. So the more intentional we become about how we want our property development to perform economically for the benefit of the parish and the city both, we have policy options through comprehensive planning, through zoning, through land development policies, that can steer development to where we want it, and where it can be economically productive, where it can be economically optimized. And right now, we have a lot of unoptimized growth patterns, and all you have to do is look at the intersection of where we have drainage problems coming up against new subdivisions. You know, if you build out in areas that are supposed to be part of the recharge of the aquifer, and you have drainage, and you're going to have economic impacts of flooding, that's probably not a smart place to be growing. So we have to get a lot more intentional, a lot more smarter about what that development pattern looks like. Finally, as I think all of you know, I work for One Acadiana, and I am charged with the urban revitalization agenda at our agency. So I will just simply restate our commitment that reinvesting in the core, where we have existing infrastructure, that doesn't put additional burden and liability on local government for infrastructure, is one way to optimize what our future economic revenues look like that support local services. And finally, for a strong and prosperous community, and a strong and prosperous business community, we need a strong public sector partner. And too often, the conversations that take place, not just in this community, but communities across the United States, focus on the single word of tax. And tax is an insufficient way to think about this. We need a strong Lafayette parish and a Lafayette city as a partner for future prosperity. And that means solving the financial and fiscal challenges that face this governmental public sector. So we have to have this in order that business will have confidence to invest in this community where we have similar investment that comes from the public sector. Again, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm definitely on the city side.
See, that's one of the problems we had. We didn't separate. I should have just put everybody on the middle.
If you'd like, I can say half of what I have, and then move over to the parish side. I'm here tonight to discuss why investment in downtown Lafayette can fix the budget chart falls. How do we do this, is the question, with no capital to fund this growth? In my opinion, we need to leverage and liquidate our public property assets in downtown Lafayette. Most of the undeveloped and unused prime real estate in downtown Lafayette, especially along Jefferson Street, is owned by the public. It's owned by the city. But yet, it is underused or poorly managed, and definitely not best use to generate return on investment. Even the land right outside this building on University could be developed. That's a great area to develop. You've got a huge parking lot back here, you've got parking on the street, but you don't really need all of that parking right there. It's not necessary. Some of these public areas also create huge expenses. So by converting these vacant or underused properties into large development projects, we can significantly grow both the property tax base and sales taxes simultaneously. We need residential housing in order to stimulate the type of growth downtown that meshes with the downtown comprehensive plan. We also need to finally tap into our cultural heritage and attract much more tourism. The mayor's vision is right on point. Tourism is one of the best and most sustainable forms of economic development possible, yet we have very little tourism in downtown Lafayette. I know. I opened a jazz and blues club, one of the best in the Gulf South, and we struggled to find tourism. It wasn't because of a lack of amazing musicians. That wasn't the problem. There's just the marketing is not there. I go out of town, I go to drive across the country, every restaurant I stop at has a Cajun dish, but for some reason, we can't market that. We can't, all of the best musicians have to leave town to go earn money. They have to go on the road. Why is that? Why don't we tap our cultural economy? Or even better, we frack everything, why don't we frack our cultural economy? Put it to work. Let these people stay home. The old federal courthouse is a perfect example of a wasted asset and a drain on the budget. As I understand, we spend and have spent hundreds of thousands over the years on this dilapidated building. How many hundreds of thousands or millions have we lost by not developing this property? What if you added up all the other property that we could be using and liquidating and converting into development projects? Why not hire an arbitrator and resolve this lingering matter? We want public-private parking garages, sell public property, and reinvest this capital into these public-private partnerships. Just make sure that we have a strong process and a short window in which development can take place. I believe that based on current market prices, I just bought land, 537 Jefferson Street, 6,300 square feet, for about $320,000. So if you pay somebody, I'll be happy to help you. You go and calculate your square footage, take the most recent comps, get an average, multiply it, you'll determine that you have several millions of dollars worth of prime real estate that you could liquidate, sell, convert, and generate the money that you're missing right now to plug your budget. Just remember, don't use it just to plug your budget. Reinvest that money. You invest money or spend money where you make money and you have money. So reinvest that money back into downtown. The same thing with the parking situation. Create a parking benefit district. Why is it that we charge people to park during the day when we have no problems, but at night, where we have lots of problems and expenses, we don't charge people? These things don't make any sense. So if the city would lead the way with large development projects, many, many other development projects would happen. Everybody's waiting on a big catalyst project. Hire an arbitrator, fix the federal courthouse problem.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Final speaker, Michael Walden.
Thank you, and thank you for listening to us. I'd hope somebody else who was more expert on this would speak, and so I waited to turn in my blue card till the end. But one thing that you'd mentioned is the problem with the prison and the cost of the prison. Well, one way that you can look at it is that the problem isn't that we don't have enough prison space and that it costs too much around the prison, but that we have too many prisoners. I have read that Lafayette has the highest incarceration rate in the state, and I've also read that Louisiana has the highest incarceration rate in the nation. As I look around at the people in our city, they don't seem to need to be in jail that much more than if I go to Houston, or Dallas, or other places. So it seems to me that a big thing that we need to do, and I know it's a huge job, is justice system reform. Read that the state is now working on justice system reform, and one estimate is that they can reduce the number of prisoners by 13%. And the estimate of how much money that's going to save the state is huge. I don't recall the amount, but it's in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So I do hope that you will consider supporting justice system reform that might come from our city parish government, also by supporting that reform in the state government.
Thank you. Any signings that didn't want to speak by any chance? Okay, all right. I'm going to allow council members, if they have any closing comments, I want to just say thank you to everyone who came out. Three things I'm going to just touch on. I guess it could be a little tidbit of good news, we're not there yet, but some of the suggestions, just to show you how there is at least some inlining, if you would. The parking has been talked about quite a bit, in particularly downtown, but again, due to the fact that the city of Lafayette, and as you know, those who reside in the city of Lafayette, do contribute to the parish coffers. Parking measures are being considered, ordinances are forthcoming. The fact that those digital meters are in storage to be deployed out is because a year or so ago, the council made the decision to make paying for parking easier and other things. So are we there? No. Are we going in the right direction? Yes. I could tell you justice reform, I met with the mayor president by phone a few weeks ago. Unfortunately, we have been named in a lawsuit as far as people who are being held in our jail. And I could tell you that there was a program in place about three or four years ago, a pre-trial release program, that for the non-violent, non-multiple offense individuals, where they were able to get out, not waiting and depended upon having to bond out, because bonding, for some, could be too expensive. And I think that we will be having an initiative come forward, and then in support of what the state is doing, that may have an impact to lower some of our numbers. Are we there yet? No, but I just want to make that known again, just kind of showing, along with a lot of the previous ideas and things that have already been done, showing you that we're trying to do some things. The downtown courthouse is a big one. It's a big, robust issue. I could tell you that we could put people in this room on every given night who won't be in agreement with each other. And I could tell you that for a council or for a parish government, you know, one of the challenges is the current district courthouse, and how historically, people has levied the use of the federal courthouse to address the need of the district courthouse, and to go forth without a plan is certainly not sensible in nature. So the idea of an arbitrator to kind of referee some of this stuff, or any third party for that matter, may be able to bring some resolve, but the federal courthouse situation has been one that has been going on for some time, that needs some attention. But I could tell you, my time here, I've heard downtown business folks, none of which who are here today, talk about make a parking lot. Knock it down and let them park, because we have a parking problem and we need more parking. I've heard other elected officials who are trying to get out of the district courthouse say that until we have a plan for a district courthouse where a tax has been defeated previously for a district courthouse, therefore, they don't want to remove this federal courthouse, if you would, until such time that that could have some assurances. So because there's so much fragmentation within the parish as what to do, you try to get that consensus. But I could tell you that I'm certainly interested, and everyone here is certainly interested in continuing to work to try to get something done with the federal courthouse that will benefit the parish and the city of Lafayette. Although, the federal courthouse is a city property. It's a city asset, unlike the district courthouse, which is for the parish of Lafayette. So what I have heard here tonight has been enlightening in nature. Looking at tax exemptions certainly is something that I think we could look at. I'm not going to say that it's a one-size-fits-all, and that absolute no across the board is the way to go, but I think there may be some opportunity to reevaluate and look at things closer to determine what's best. And again, many other things that were said here today, the charter was mentioned quite a few times, and the four of us have certainly tried to address these charter issues. But I could tell you that when someone feels that they now may have an advantage, sometimes no one wants to work on it. In other words, you know, it's funny, and Andrew often talks about taxation with representation. I will tell you, if you think we have a problem now, after the 2020 census, when it will be determined that the majority of the people lives outside of the city of Lafayette, and if there's no changes on how this government is formulated, that means we will probably go from five council members representing the majority city residents, and four members representing all other people, to where we will probably only have four members representing the city of Lafayette, and five members representing all other people, because that's where the majority will be, outside of the city of Lafayette. And at that point, because of the structure of this government, you will have And at that point, because of the structure of this government, you will have a, a chance that someone will be running the city coffers who don't pay into it. So I could tell you, the four people up here has been very interested in correcting those issues, but it takes a supermajority. It takes six members of the council to want to do that, to let the people determine what they want to do. So some of these things that has taken place on not that there has not been an attempt, it's just that they have been unsuccessful. But nonetheless, we will continue to try, and that's the effort you see here today. And I appreciate those people who have acknowledged and expressed appreciation for people who seek public favor to subject themselves to an environment where, you know, you're putting yourself in front of the people and say, tell us like it is, tell us what you think. Again, I haven't seen that often, but again, in the words of Jay Castile, we're at the end of the road and there's no more can. And whatever happens, and we're going to emphasize just in case somebody go to their social media when they leave here, we are not asking anyone for any taxes. We are not asking for any taxes. We are asking for ideas. And those that we have received in writing, and those we have heard here today has been, some things have been just fixed things, correct some things, change some things. People have sent us information on user fees, that people could pay to do certain things better. I've heard things about stormwater retention programs at a residential level, letting people who take care of their own stormwater financially benefit from it. You know, so there have been a lot of ideas that have come in from Youngsville, Scott, the city of Lafayette, everywhere, on behalf of the parish of Lafayette. And I just want to say I'm grateful for that. Mr. Castile?
Thank you, Mr. Pudrow. And I too want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. A lot of good stuff was brought out tonight. I took two pages of notes. Can't really understand it because I was writing so fast, trying to listen to everybody talk, so I didn't want to miss anything. But there was a lot of good stuff come out, and I really appreciate that. This, this isn't an easy job, but it's something that we need to do and we need to face this problem. Some interesting stuff tonight. I'm really, really surprised at some of the things that came up, which is good. It's good stuff. So just when you go home tonight, just realize that it wasn't in vain. You, you, you did do some good coming here tonight. I wish we'd have had 100 people here tonight, like at the tree meeting that Mr. Kunk had, okay? But it's good.
Trees are way more important than funding.
It's okay. But we're still going to, we're still going to continue doing what we do. Once again, thank you all for coming out tonight, and I appreciate these, these guys up here and putting themselves out like that. Thank you, Mr. Pudrow.
Mr. Kunk?
I, I didn't hit my mic.
All right. Well, I'm just giving, trying to give everybody, Mr. Nakem, anything closing?
Nothing much. I mean, just echo what you said. I'm very grateful to be here and very happy to hear everybody come up and give suggestions. A lot of great things, stuff that I want to look into, the exemptions and things that can definitely make a difference. And if there's something that the council overlooked or we, we did something, it wasn't because we were trying to hurt the city or trying to hurt the parish. Sometimes we look at things at certain times that can, we think or feels better for the community, but you know, no one's perfect. You know, we all make mistakes, but if there's something that we can go back to the drawing board, things that were brought up to our attention that we can look and revisit and make some changes. You know, the exemptions is one thing. I think there's other avenues that, you know, maybe we're, we're missing out that we're not collecting that other progressive cities do collect, whether it's vendor's comp or occupational license fees. There's got to be some other things that other cities are doing that this council just has to dig deep and figure out how they're doing it, how it works, and realize whatever changes we make may not be happy, and people may not like it, whether it's coming from business or it's coming from property owners. But some, some things need to be looked at, and I think we have a lot of great things that you guys brought out, and I thank you for your time and, and voicing your opinion and putting your heart out there as well, because this is, this is something that I think is, is a great thing. So thank you for your time. I appreciate you very much.
And just, Mr. Nakem mentioned something, just to give you an idea of things that can in fact be considered in the future. There was some, and it was said slightly here tonight, but forming separate parish taxing districts for drainage, fire protection, recreation could allow citizens affected by lower funding to vote to tax themselves. But that was just a recommendation for somebody else. So again, we've captured all of these. And, you know, there, there are issues a lot, and, and I apologize, Bruce, we could have asked Bruce to do his presentation, but we kind of thought that would have been repetitive. Many people have saw it, but we have been focusing on things that have funding available that is short for whatever reason, whether it's because someone was given a break, or whether it's because it's just short because we're not collecting enough. We didn't get a chance to talk about, and, and we was hoping going into the future that we could talk about things like what Councilman Nakem brought up, parish-wide fire protection. The city of Lafayette has an awesome, robust fire department. Each municipality has a fire department, but those 70,000 residents that Mr. Kunk identified, the volunteers from those other departments have to respond to those fires. So we, you know, some of the ideas that we were looking for and some of the things we were trying to address is how do we offer fire protection to those 70,000 individuals? I think somewhere around 30 or so thousand homes that exist out there in the unincorporated area of Lafayette, that when we had, when we did not have an agreement with place, some of these properties was left at risk. Okay? Certainly a response was going to be made, but not nearly as sufficient as the agreement we got in place now. So for us, when we look at these things, there are things that need to be fixed that's in place today, and then there are some things we have to look to in the future to make sure that all of our citizens, even those in the unincorporated area who did not get annexed, or who said, I do not want to be annexed, still are able to get the services that they deserve. So again, it's, it's a lot, but we, we're committed to working on it. Multiple, multiple meetings have taken place, and we're going to continue to do so. Mr. Kunk, did you hit your button?
Please.
Yeah, go ahead, please.
I, I would not want to disappoint my colleague, Mr. Castile, by not making this note, because I, I tend to make it at every meeting. Whatever this committee proposes moving forward will not impact the budget that we begin consideration on in July. What we are looking at today, and hopefully what we will present with some resolutions, will impact the next budget. The budget that we begin in July will be effective November 1 of 2018 and take us through 2019. Am I right on that note? Yeah. So whatever we come up with, we're going to have to struggle through the next budget. Hopefully, we'll have some positive results that the next time around, we're going to do better and we can serve the interests of the constituency the way they expect to be served.
Thank you. Thank you. So again, I think we made sure we acknowledge every speaker who signed in and chose to speak. We collected every card that was submitted, that will be made part of our record and our file. I can tell you that there's a consideration to try to do a parish-wide summit in this fall, and we think that it's just that important to do as much out in the open public as possible. When we went to those municipalities of Scott, Broussard, Doucement, Carron Crowe, and Youngsville, and when we've met with the leaders of the sheriff department, the district court, the DA, Lafayette Economic Development Authority, Bayou Vermillion District Library, when we met with those individuals, we introduced that concept because either we are the ones who, who receive the funding in some form or fashion, or the ones who need something. So what we had talked about doing is having a summit, trying to have all those people there, and it would also, of course, be for public purpose. So if you hear about a, a fall summit on the same issue, we invite you out today to make sure that you are part of that. Okay? Again, thank you for coming, and please have safe travels home. Meeting adjourned.